Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Graham Cassoon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Sid.
Here.
Witt.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval of minutes.
Tonight we have the council meeting for July 3, 2017.
Action by Aldman Kleiner, second by Aldman John Francois, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Correspondents.
Tonight there's one correspondence, and it was requested by Mr. Peter Murray for Middlecrest Crossing Principal to reduce the age on Phase 1 to 55 years old.
Oh, to legislative?
That is all for correspondence.
For the good of the city, anyone would like to come up and address the council, please step forward.
Good evening, members of the common council, Mr. President. I just noticed that there's a resolution today in reference to accepting money for New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Commission for the use of police traffic services. I do, as a resident of the Second Ward, want to thank the common council and the City of Middletown for the efforts they've taken to address speeding, particularly on Highland Avenue. And also, as a parent, encourage the council to lend their voices to the state legislature. There has been legislation recently that was passed in the state senate that will increase the fines for individual drivers that pass school buses, surpass them. I believe the legislation hasn't been approved in the Assembly, so I encourage our members of the common council to work together with our Assemblywoman and other members of the state Assembly to see that there is final legislation. I think that's very good, to protect our children and ensure that no one puts any school child or a school bus in danger or harms way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council? Okay, report to department heads, economic development.
You have a resolution this evening regarding a grant from the County of Orange Health Department. The $3,000 grant will go towards buying benches and bike racks for the skateboard park, so I just wanted to let you know what that grant was for. That's all I have for this evening.
Question Maria. Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Superintendent Parks.
Just a little bit of information, actually, for the public. All of our fall registration is out. Our fall program is basically starting five weeks, so cheerleading and soccer. And we also have an after-school sports academy we'll be starting. It'll start September 11. The forms should be ready by next week. You folks will see that in a resolution. We are moving some money from our day camp that was not used into our special programs. All that money will come back in fees for the program. We're going to be able to serve 190 students, 3rd through 5th grade, and 6th through 8th grade. So we're looking forward to doing that. And then also with school coming up, Middletown Cares and the Mayor's Youth Council is doing their back-to-school, school supply drive, so anybody that would like to give donations to school supplies, you could drop it off the Recreation Department. Every year we take about 450 to 600 backpacks and supplies to the schools to kids that don't have. And that's all I have this evening.
Any question for Chris? Thank you, Chris. Commissioner, DPW.
Good evening, all. Would like to report to you on the progress of the Woolworth Building Construction Project. The asbestos abatement and mold abatement have started, and they are proceeding with no issues so far. Five Mulberry Street demolition, we are working with the contractor about demolishing the house in here on Five Mulberry, and we're waiting for the contracts to be signed with them. The street paving projects, they are moving very well because we have taken on too many roads in here, paving aspect of things. The contractor had to break for a couple of days, so if you haven't seen paving today and tomorrow, it's because the contractor cannot commit for such an extended period of time to pave a large amount of the streets in the city without attending to their own throughway and bridge paving projects. And that's why they're not here today and tomorrow. And with that, I will conclude. Excuse me, if you have any questions for me? No, I'm good, I'm good.
Sir?
Yeah, thank you.
Any question for Jacob?
You want to give me a break this evening?
Good to go.
I was worried about you, Jacob.
That was nice, Jacob.
Thank you.
City Clerk.
There are two resolutions tonight for South Gate at Middletown. These two resolutions were like three months ago. They're just, the applicant missed their 90-day window to file those with the county, so we had to do the resolution again. There's no public hearing, there's no changes, so there should be no issues with this, so they can file with the county. That's all I have for this evening.
Question for John. Thank you, John. Okay, public hearings and grievances.
Okay, we have three public hearings tonight. The first one is for the bid moratorium, 13 Center Street Beauty Salon. I'll read the notice. Notice is hereby given that the City of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 31, I'm sorry, on Monday, July 31. Honored or near 8:00 p.m. as possible, common council chamber, second floor, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the appeal of the bid moratorium on proposed beauty shop, 13 Center Street, Section 31, Block 10, Section 8. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against proposed special use permit and site plan approval. Full plans are available at the office of the common council clerk, 16 James Street, room 12, by the order of the common council, John Sinamcek, clerk of the common council. This was published in the Times held record on July 24 and July 25, and on the city website.
Okay, it is time the public hearings now open.
And for the record, could you, you have your mailings?
Yes.
Proof of mailings?
Yeah.
Okay, if you could just give those to Karen, please.
Everything there was in order, I believe.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the common council, my name is Ronald Kasser. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Marie's Beauty Salon LLC. The principal of the entity is here, Hilario Chavez. This is an application for a modification of variance under the moratorium local law number one of 2017 for permission to use the premises as a hair and beauty salon. It's the property located across the street at 13 Center Street. The property prior to the, this, this application was filed prior to June 30, and that's why we come under the application for a variance or modification. This property was used for commercial purposes prior to the moratorium. It's consistent with the proposed zoning ordinance amendments, and it can be used, it's always been used for commercial, so the variance is necessary so that it will prevent undue hardship to the applicant, because right now we technically cannot use it for commercial purposes. I believe that it's within the, it's within the intent and purpose for the Business Improvement District, and it is consistent with the health, safety, and general welfare of the city and its residents. And we would respectfully request that you grant the application for variance or modification.
Anyone from the public have any comments? Any members on the council? Aldman Kleiner.
I just want to say, we did consider this in committee, and everything seems to be in order, so this is not the first time we've heard it.
That's correct, we were here a couple of weeks ago. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I have a motion to close the public hearing. Go move. Second. Massey. Second by Aldman Burr. All in favor? Aye. Public hearings closed. Another public hearing.
Second public hearing for the bid moratorium, 9 to 29 Canal Street, and for an art studio. Notice is hereby given that the City of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 31, honored as near 8:00 p.m. as possible, common council chamber, second floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on an appeal of the bid moratorium for a proposed art studio for 9 to 29 Canal Street, Section 35, Block 3, Section 24.1. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed special use permit and site plan approval. Full plans are available in the office of the common clerk, 16 James Street, room 12, by the order of the common council, son John Sinamcek, clerk of the common council, City of Middletown. This was published in the Times held record on July 24 and July 25, and on the city website.
Good evening.
And you have your proof of mailings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Give us a brief summary of your project.
Oh, the 9, 29 Canal Street space in the basement, right next door to the body shop, will be a art studio, hosting art shows and other art-related events.
Anyone from the public have any questions? Anyone from the council have any questions? I have a couple of questions. Just to go back, there was a letter by Clark Patterson, was the issue addressed about the, if there's food going to be served?
Nothing of the sort, no.
So are you going to have food there?
Well, from, from what I understood from that mailer, it was like food preparation. There's not, not going to be anything like that there, no kitchen or anything like that, no.
And the, the floor plans, does it have where the doors, do you have like means of egress through the back, or just to the front and the side?
There is a, it is on the plan where the fire exit is, yes. There's actually two, there's three, three doors. One is on the far, far corner of the space, and that exits out, it kind of merges with the other fire exits which are in the building.
And just going back to the food, you're not going to prep food, but are you serving food?
There might be snacks available if there's an event, but nothing for sale, just for...
And this is just going to be art studio, no music, no...
There might be music, but it would be, you know, it would be, it wouldn't be anything huge. It might be some open mics or something like that, if it's, if it's art-related, yes.
So it's, it's more arts to like poetry and singing?
Arts in general, yeah, just encompassing everything.
And you still have to fall within the building inspector and the fire inspectors?
Yes.
Have any improvements been done to the building, or anything?
No modifications, no. He is restoring parts of the restrooms. I'm not sure exactly what Wes Soloway has in mind, but it's within the original construction that's there. And he is restoring the sprinkler system, and he's replacing the garage doors, which was already approved by the Architectural Review Board.
So the side doors are what you're going to use to go inside?
Correct.
And what are you using for parking?
The municipal lot across the street.
Anyone else have any questions? Aldman Kleiner.
I just, in the full resolution, it basically says that all the issues that were raised by the engineer have been addressed and successfully addressed.
Yes.
I'm going by the wording that our corporation council put in the resolution that he's satisfied with, with what they've done to address those issues.
Jacob, has your department reviewed anything?
Not to my knowledge yet, except, not to my knowledge yet.
So you're, the building inspector, fire inspector, has not seen the building, has not addressed anything?
Not to my knowledge, but we will be reviewing everything to make, we will be reviewing everything to be, make sure that it is in compliance with the, with the New York State Building Code.
Aldman John Francois.
The only question that I have, when common council president asks you about the music, if you do have an event, and if you do have music, how would that be? Would it be a band, a DJ?
Probably live music. I don't, I don't think a DJ would constitute as art.
Live music, which is a band?
Yes.
Okay.
Or like, you know, open mic, or, you know, different styles of music, as long as it's within that umbrella of the arts, yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? And how many bathrooms do you have in that area?
There are two.
Two bathrooms?
Yes.
And what do you expect for like the events? How, how big, because it's a big, large room, right?
I, I really don't know what to expect, honestly, so I'm hoping it is going to be successful, but...
Have you done this before?
No.
Anyone else? Motion to close. Go move. Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman Johnson. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Another public hearing.
We have a public hearing for the bid moratorium for 21 North Street for an art gallery. I'll read the notice. Notice is hereby given, the City of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 31, 2017, honored as near 8:00 p.m. as possible, common council chamber, second floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on an appeal of the bid moratorium for a proposed art gallery for 21 North Street, Section 31, Block 7, Section 22. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against proposed special use permit and site plan approval. Full plans are available at the office of the common council clerk, 16 James Street, room 12, by the order of the common council, John Sinamcek, clerk of the common council, City of Middletown. This was published in the Times held record on July 24 and July 25, and on the city website.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisette, and I'm with Element Square, and I'm also with Matthew Alvarez, who is with Element Square. He's the president and founder of Element Square, and a brief...
Excuse me, Lisette, just wanted, do you hand in your pub, your...
Yes, oh, yes.
Proof of mailings, just so we have it for the record.
Yes, they have, okay.
And just a brief summary of what we're trying to open at 21 North Street is a collaborative artist workspace, where we're also going to do retail, and we're also going to have it as a gallery. We're going to have, we're going to work with current and aspiring artists of all kinds, visual, technical, art now is technical, and graphic designing, even architects, so we, it's going to be a collaborative effort in the space to work either together or individually. As part of coming to our location, we will also offer supplies needed, workspace, if they wanted a dedicated space, or if they wanted to use a private space for either media, or workshops, or lessons, the space will be available for the artists that we're working with. And we will also have the opportunity for them to showcase their works as exhibits, or, and, you know, depending on a timeframe for their work, like, I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with the gallery where you have a time period to see an artist's work, or we will also have, in addition to that, a retail opportunity for them to also sell their work. And we're hoping that we're going to bridge the gap between having an idea and allowing that idea to become reality. So I thank everyone for their time and consideration, and I'm open for any questions.
It's time the public hearings open. Anyone from the public? Any board member? Any questions? Do I have a motion to close? Go move. Massey, seconded by Aldman Cassoon. Motion. All in favor? Aye. Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, remarks of the department. Aldman. Aldman Massey.
Nothing this evening.
Aldman Burr.
My condolences to Jerry Kleiner's sister and the family. Sorry about your passing, Jerry. And the one other thing, our pools are open for the rest of August. Come out and support them. Free swims Tuesdays and Thursdays from 9 to 11, and the pools are open seven days a week from 12 to 6. Thank you.
Aldman Cassoon.
Two minutes, I promise. Tonight I just want to say a few things about Night Out Against Crime that will be tomorrow evening. Davidge Park starts at 5:00 p.m. Cap off the evening at 9:00 p.m. with a fireworks show. It's going to be an outstanding evening for families. Looks like the weather will cooperate. Looks like we're going to have a nice hot day. I just want to briefly thank the sponsors for Night Out Against Crime. We can't do it without the help of our local businesses, so I'd just like to give them the opportunity to get some recognition with my remarks this evening. So I'd like to thank our fireworks sponsor, which is Prestige Lexus of Middletown. A big thank you to them. Our gold sponsor, Clark Patterson Lee. Our silver sponsors, G. Richard Truex Plumbing, Healy Brothers, and Kiwanis. And our bronze sponsors, Sierra Automotive, Mid-City Transit, Tony Baffa's Restaurant, Fusco Engineering, Middletown PBA, Appleby McPhillips Funeral Home, Todd Lyons Paving, Steve Dodd Plumbing, Orange Regional Medical Center, Middletown Honda, Sossler's Farm Equipment, Middletown Professional Firefighters, Local 1027, and Marshall &amp; Sterling. I'd also like to thank our sponsors of services, Vargas Productions, and A&amp;T's House of Bounce. And an extra special thank you to Middletown Cares and Kelly Ocasio, without whom we could not make Night Out a success. Your assistance in all things has been above and beyond, and I can't thank you enough. I'd like to thank ex-chief Ramon Bethencourt. I'd like to thank Sergeant Khalil, Lieutenant Dolan, and our new chief, J.J. Iwanchu, who will make his emcee debut tomorrow evening at the event. And I'm grateful for your support, your ideas, and your energy in bringing the event together. To Chris Brinkerhoff, John Bianchi, and the staff of Parks and Rec, you've been instrumental in helping me out, putting this together year after year, so thank you so much. To my volunteers, you're an example to the community, always ready to jump in and make things a success. I can't thank you enough. I cannot do this event without all of you. You guys make it work. It's an amazing community night. I hope to see lots of you out there tomorrow. That's all I have, thank you.
Aldman Johnson.
Thanks. As far as the resolution tonight from Maple Hill, I want to once again thank all those involved, from the department to the committees. It's in the Third Ward, we especially appreciate it, but obviously it's a city park, we appreciate that as well. So a couple of weeks ago, I got home from work late, which is not particularly relevant to the story, except for the fact that I started making my dinner at about 10:47, and I put some stuff on my stove, and then I promptly fell asleep. And when I awoke, my phone was ringing, and my smoke alarm was going off. And I did not answer the phone, because I was trying to figure out why the smoke alarm was going off, which is because of the smoke from the dinner I wasn't going to eat. And by the time I opened the windows, I looked out, and I had one, two, three, four fire trucks in front of my home, probably in less than five or six minutes. So at the risk of appearing foolish and being embarrassed, I do want to say I thank those who responded, and it certainly is reassuring to all of us in the community that response was extremely quick. I didn't get to have dinner, but I didn't have my house burned down either, so that was a really good thing. Not only did the gentlemen respond, they didn't make me feel foolish, and they also offered to set up some fans for my home, so I just wanted to thank them, and I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Aldman Witt.
Thank you very much. I just want to remind folks that our Second Ward constituents meeting is August 14 at 7:00 p.m. right here. Sid, thank you.
Kleiner.
Thank you. Hope to see everybody at Night Out tomorrow, and it's also a busy week for a lot of people who have been out protesting CPB and that whole enterprise, the Valley Lateral Pipeline. Public hearing is Wednesday, August 2, 6:00 p.m. at the Paramount Theater. It ought to be very interesting. Then on this Sunday, August 6, from 11:00 to 3:00, the Middletown Community Health Center is holding their community health fair at Thrall Park, and I think it would be worth a visit. And then next Tuesday, August 8, the Orange County Planning Department has been promoting solarized Hudson Valley, and they are sponsoring different information sessions. There will be one on Tuesday, August 8, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at Thrall Library, so there will be people there to answer all your questions about how to solarize your home. If you're interested, please turn out. Thank you.
John Francois.
Good evening, thank you. Just want to let everybody know that I'm not spacious, because my mic is not working, that's my special mic tonight.
He's a DJ on the side.
And I'm not about to rap either. I just want to remind everyone, the Department of Public Works will have us this Sunday, August 2. We'll be having a special pickup, garbage pickup for the downtown bid district due to the ungrown area, and this pickup is only on Sundays for the downtown bid district, not for the whole City of Middletown. It will be starting this Sunday. I just want to encourage people not to put your garbage in the garbage bag. It has to be in the garbage bin. And also, I can't emphasize that enough, the mayor talked about it, Aldman Kleiner, and, and the commissioner, we try to encourage people to please recycle, we need it. We have to start recycling, this is getting to crucial time. And I don't know if it's me or not, but whenever I put a, 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 you know, plastic cups or anything in the garbage, I get this icky feeling that I'm not doing the right thing, I should be recycling, but I think that's what we should all be doing. Thank you.
Aldman Sid.
Hello, good evening. Looking forward to seeing everyone tomorrow at Night Out. And also, just want to remind everyone, our constituents meeting is this Saturday, August 5, at 10:00 here at the council chambers, so I'll be looking forward to seeing everyone as well. Thank you.
Who passes?
Tonight we have resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt to accept an award in the amount of $9,750 from the New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Committee for the use in the police traffic services.
Resolution responsible by Aldman Witt, seconded by Aldman Cassoon. Any discussion? Rope.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Sid.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner to accept six donations in support of the 2017 Night Out totaling $2,200.
Resolution responsible by Aldman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman Witt. Any discussion? Rope.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Sid.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Sid to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with BAS to authorize the treasurer to transfer $4,800 from the general fund balance to fund an update to the City of Middletown website.
Resolution responsible by Aldman Sid, seconded by Aldman Kleiner. Any discussion? Rope.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Sid.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Those are some passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Young Explosives Fireworks Exhibition for fireworks to be held Tuesday, August 1, 2017 for Night Out Against Crime.
Resolution responsible by Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman Cassoon. Any discussion? Rope.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Sid.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr to approve the 2017 budget for the Night Out Against Crime.
Resolution responsible by Aldman Burr, seconded by Aldman Cassoon. Any discussion? Rope.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.[1739.78] Jean-François?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Johnson to authorize the treasurer to accept a donation from the Middletown Lions Club in the amount of $500 for the Middletown Cares Coalition.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Johnson, seconded by Alden Massie, any discussion? Roll.
Bram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Those are some passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Witt to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with CDM Smith for professional engineering services for grant funding application preparation support.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Witt, seconded by Alden Jean-François, any discussion?
Bram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Kleiner to approve the South Gate at Middletown LLC Short Environmental Assessment Form for the city unlisted action for purpose of SECRE.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Kleiner, seconded by Alden Massie, any discussion? Roll.
Bram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Sid to grant a 30-day waiver for a liquor license application for Italiana Pizzeria and Bar at 293 Wayway Onda Avenue, Middletown, New York.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Sid, seconded by Alden Jean-François, any discussion? Alden Johnson?
Just a correction, it just says 30, doesn't have the word "day" in the resolution.
30-day waiver.
30-day waiver.
Right, but it doesn't say day, it just says 30-waiver. 30-waiver.
Oh, 30-waiver, okay.
Anyone else? Roll.
Bram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Massie to accept a $3,000 grant from the New York State Department of Health through the county of Orange, and to authorize the mayor to sign all relevant forms.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Massie, seconded by Alden Burr, any discussion? Roll.
Bram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Burr to authorize the mayor to sign the Miracle Recreation Equipment Company contract to order and install playground equipment at Maple Hill Park, as approved in the 2017 capital budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Burr, seconded by Alden Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Bram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Johnson to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total[1611.47]